Thank you for joining us. This is Live with Miami's Community News, and I'm Michael Miller. Our guest today is South Miami Commissioner Steve Kaya. Steve, thanks so much for being here.
Good to see you, Mike.
So it's been a while since you were here, a couple of months, I think. Let's talk about the things that are going on in the city of South Miami that benefit the residents that live here.
Oh, there's so many things going on. The new building across Casa Cuva is starting leasing. For us at the city, it's a big deal because there's some investment happening in the city. It's part one of getting our town center revitalized, getting more people in the area. We're seeing a lot more restaurants come in, Mano Libera, Kitchen 57, on and on and on. A lot more bakeries are happening. So we're seeing a lot more buzz. You know how we can tell is is our parking revenue has gone up a little bit, so we're trying to figure out.
Is that right?
Yeah, that's how we know there's more people coming. So we know we're doing something right. We just got to continue the process, and good work coming ahead.
How many units are there approximately in that building across the street?
It's approximately 220 to 250.
300-plus people a day are going to be going in and out of there and walking to the neighborhood stores and walking those streets. So that's really tremendous. I don't remember the last time there was that type of increase. And then it looks like the Bank United property, it looks like they have a new fence around it. It looks like they're about to start something new over there.
Yeah, so the Bank United property, they moved one and a half blocks further west. So they're redeveloping and doing a two-story, so they're moving the bank. And the idea is the owners of the building, which own the surface lot in front of Kitchen 57, they're hopefully going to go, we're working on figuring out what we do with that development site, because the surface parking, that big spot, the big hole in the middle, is not what we want as a city, but hopefully we can get something going there that's going to be precious for the city.
And when the, what is the new, I call it the shops of Sunset, is it still called that?
I don't know. The name to be determined.
But when it gets done, whenever that is, it's going to bring a lot of stuff for people to go see. Tell us about that.
Well, look, I think that the development group in general have a lot of great ideas, starting with FMB, right? The restaurant, the bars, just all the business, the retail that it's going to bring. The way they're trying to go do it very methodically, very scientific. So we're going to see very good things. You know, the idea is going to be a very mixed unit, you know, hotel, condos, apartments, office space. So it's a true mixture of different things going on, whether it's in the morning, afternoon, dinner, or late night.
And the businesses along there and the people that live there are going to have many places to go to shop, which is sort of limited right now.
Right.
And so within, is it going to be done within five years-ish?
Well, that's the plan, right? You know, one of the things that we did in the city is when we gave them their development rights, is that we wanted to make sure they complete the job, right? So they're starting their phase. Right now, they're doing really good work on, working on infrastructure. I know that they've already done a lot in the design phase. We're hopefully getting ready into, you know, some design documents so we can start presenting to the city. But things are moving along. It's a big, big project. So what I hear, it's going pretty good. The look and feel looks great. The drawings look great. A lot of excitement coming from the rental, you know, the markets, the restaurants. So we'll see how that goes.
And it is a great lesson in life that these folks wound up buying that probably a year after the pandemic, when the owner of it was a public company, and they dumped it. So these folks here, it is now, four or five years later, and the property is worth a fortune as compared to before. Do I have that about right?
You do. I mean, look, one of the things that we did is we created development rights in a zone, right? So we didn't the opposite way. We didn't want people to spot and have opportunities to do different things with different buildings. We had a vision for the city. We worked a lot. We had a lot of infrastructure. We had a lot of feedback over the communities, a lot of studies done. So the way that we did is we created a zone where you have specific rights, and whoever has it, who wants to buy it, that's your right, and you do what you need to do to be part of the city.
And when you create that town center, because that's essentially what it's going to be, so you have the town center, and then you have all the things that surround it that are direct beneficiaries of these thousands of people a week that are going to be going there. They're all going to be spending money. They're going to be going to the restaurants. They're going to be raising families there. They could be students or business people across the county. Let's, if you will, let's talk about Progress Lane and Commerce Lane. It seems to be getting cleaned up a lot. The cars that used to be parked out on the streets seem to be gone, and the buildings are painted a little bit better. Is there a plan for trying to continue to improve the area, or do you think it's going to continue on the path that it is?
Well, look, Commerce Lane and Prospect Lane, they're South Miami gems, right? That's where we go for our mechanics, body shop. It's been very specific, and that industry's been there forever. Do I see it changing in the near future? Not so much, just because of the actual square footage and how the streets are divided. What we are seeing a big change, though, is closer to the metro station, right, the transit station. So we have a lot more student housing coming in. Our alliance now with the University of Miami and having kids closer to UM and in South Miami is a benefit to everybody included. You're seeing, you know, Related trying to do a couple more urban areas as well. We're investing a lot in our parks in the community. So, oh, and then Academica, their headquarters, and a new building that they're doing. So you're going to see a lot more change in that area. Hopefully, we can bring in some supermarkets and some other things to kind of supplement that. But that particular area is changing a lot.
And again, and it's clear that's because of the city. You said, listen, you can't be parking your cars there. And I know it was an area that before was sort of ignored, but congratulations to the city and the code enforcement. Some people might think it was, some people think it was too much, but the reality, the end result, it looks significantly better.
Look, Mike, a lot of people aren't a fan of code enforcement, right? Because that code enforcement by nature is not great. But I think it's a very important part of our city, because it helps us enforce laws and regulations. If not, then what would we be without that?
I had the occasion to go to the South Miami Post Office. I hope somebody from the Post Office is listening. It is atrocious. That is a government building, a federal government. It's terrible, everything about it. I mean, for God's sake, mow the yard at least once a month. So hopefully, somebody's going to do something. We're going to write a little bit about it, and hopefully, somebody will pay attention to it. And again, as things change, it's not very, people don't go there very often anymore.
Well, remember, we also, there is one of the few assets that we have left is right next to the Post Office. So the idea that we can do something special collectively in that area would be nice. And remember, the government doesn't own that land. It's privately owned, and they lease it back to the government, just so you know.
Okay. Let's talk about the, there's a proposal, or a soon-to-be proposal for redevelopment of City Hall.
Correct.
What, if you could push a magic button, what would you like that building to look like, and what would be in it?
Well, I mean, it's not a magic button. It's something that we're currently working on. The idea is that we're going to have a municipal center in this middle of what we would like to call like a campus, a lot of park area, very adjacent to the underline. The municipal center will have police station, city hall, a library, an extra square footage for different things, economic, or whatever we want to do with it. We're still working on those final details. And then adjacent to that, we'll have two big buildings with retail on the bottom facing into the park, a major park inside. We're moving over, I forgot the name of the park, but they're moving over there. And like I said, it's going to be right next to the underline. So the campus will also have egress and ingress from Sunset and 62nd Avenue. So we're working on a partnership with South Miami Baptist, so we can have an entry on that side as well. So there's a lot of good things coming there.
And there is a old eye clinic at the corner of Sunset Drive and US 1 that is next to the library. Is that in the plans? It's by a vendor, I mean, somebody that's putting out the plan. Does that include that property?
It does not. So currently, we were talking about figuring out what to do with that property. That property, I think, is vacant right now. There's nothing there. But no, there's no plans right now, as we speak, with that property.
And the project that you're looking for could be, could be just fine and dandy without it?
We have no choice.
Yes.
It's not our property.
I understand, but it can be complete, you know, with that.
Look, there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle, right? It'll be a nice piece to have. Whether we can make that happen or not, we'll wait and see.
Okay. So let's, next thing is that the feds and the county has made quite a few cutbacks. And particularly of concern to me was in the charitable end, most of the charities got axed altogether. And the feds got a lot of different stuff that they've cut back on. So how's the budget for the city, and what does it look like for next year and the year after?
Well, I mean, look, so there's a, there's a lot of good things going on with South Miami. For example, South Miami is one of the few cities that the housing market continues to rise. Everybody's either, you know, at level or dropping a little bit. We were one of the few ones that kept on going up. There's a lot of good things going on with the community. A, we have a lot of investment coming in, which will bring our operating revenue a lot higher. We expect some, you know, hopefully somewhere between 12% to 18% in the next three years. We have a healthy budget with police. We don't have turnover. We're in a really good spot. We do have some issues that we have to take care of, because, you know, it has been, for lack of a better word, neglected over time. But now we have the bond. So we're trying to figure out what we do with the bond, what investments we can make in the future. So we're working that in the budget season this year. It's not about cutting, really, for us. It's really how do we make our investments, which is a different problem, by the way.
I'm glad you brought it up. Let's talk about the septic tank conversion. I know the city's in part of it, so let's talk about that a little bit.
Well, it's funny, because Emily's back there, and we were just talking about that. So we had created a plan to do septic sewer. We're ex-finalizing the first phase of it. It was really tough. It's a very dirty job, septic to sewer conversion. But I think we're getting, you know, we're getting our feet wet under us, and we'll start Phase Two coming up here. We have money for it, allocated from both the state, the government. So we have it all in plan, and we're going to be moving forward.
And projects like that don't happen overnight. This is many years in the works.
Correct, yeah. You have, so we were one of the few people that first created the plan, and we executed on the plan. We got it updated, and now we're executing. So, you know, it takes a long time. We have to get the finances. You first have to plan, get the finances, and then go execute.
What is the cost to homeowners on average to convert, when they have septic tanks, they have to like, close it out, if you will?
There's, there's no exact science, but we're estimating somewhere between $12,000 to $18,000 per house.
Does the city-county offer longer-term financing on that?
Well, there's going to be a lot of different plans in place, but the PACE program is doing a lot of things with it.
Oh, my goodness. The Senator Renee Garcia, County Commissioner. All right, we need a microphone. Steve Kaya, okay.
How are you?
Good. Commissioner, how are you, sir? We were just talking about septic tanks. So the city's converting some? I know the county's going to work on that in the next two decades or so.
I know. That's Raquel's big thing, that she, Commissioner Regalado.
Mine as well.
She loves doing septic to sewer, and we're a big fan of it, too. So we started Phase One. We got Phase Two and Phase Three already lined up.
So ran into the Commissioner the other night at Improv over there in Doral, and it's a great club. And some of the people, we promote some of the second acts on that. And Sebastian Alvarez, who runs the club over there, does a show every week. So it was nice seeing you. And it was a good picture of you, all things considered.
That was great.
All right. So let's talk about, we're talking about septic tanks. We're talking, oh, since the city has a healthy budget, since you were here, Commissioner, the, I know, what can you say?
We're in a good spot right now.
I would just want to heckle you. I wasn't supposed to be on this show right now.
It's been reported there's a deficit of $420 million, more or less, out of a budget of 12.7, out of a budget of 12, he's good, all right, 12.7 billion, billion, billion. So the things that have come to me, this is what people are complaining about. They would complain about the cultural affairs, $12 million. Most of the charities got axed, all right? Parks Department, $25 million got axed, which means I sense that, they say, oh, the grass won't get mowed, but I think it's a little bit more than that. And then people were objecting to driving into tropical park, you'd have to pay a parking fee. So as part of the 13 that vote, this budget's in a up or down. There's a public hearing coming up in a couple of weeks, right? Is there anything you would like to disclose publicly about the budget? No, Michael, nothing?
Actually, first of all, yeah, I'm all about septic sewer. This is why you will never see me vote on the county commission for any septic tanks. And I am so proud of the work that you guys are trying to accomplish, because in Hialeah years ago, you know, people make fun of Hialeah all the time. Hialeah converted the city from completely to a sewer system-based city. So if Hialeah was able to do it, I know things are more expensive now. All the other municipalities can do it. I think it's important for us to do that, especially those of us that talk a big game about the environment and talk a big game about protecting the bay, you know, there's, or the Everglades. We know that, you know, I know there's a big talk that the newer septic tanks don't leak, but nonetheless, they're septic tanks, and they are prone to leakage. They leak much less, but yet they still leak. And if we do care about our communities and we do care about having residency moving forward, I think one of the things that we need to do in Miami-Dade County, along with our state partners, federal partners, and our local communities, and you're taking the charge and lead, and I appreciate that, is to convert Miami-Dade County from septic and have a complete sewer system that can be done with investment. It actually can be done, but we should strive for that. So anyway.
That's why I did it too. On the same subject, before we go back. So in 2023, the waste energy plant in Doral burnt down. And so the county has, for the past year and a half, has been bouncing on what to do. In the meanwhile, we are shipping to about trash more and then to the middle of the state, all our stuff, all our trash, which I find absolutely abhorrent. The older I get, I'm realizing, what are we doing? We went in our house and bought a composter. We put in all the food. In two days, it's gone. Doesn't smell and reduces it to dirt. Something, this commission has to do something that's better than what we're doing. What's the plan to handle our garbage and our trash and our recycling?
Well, look, the first, the most inexpensive way to have approached this was to pick the Doral site as, to rebuild the Doral site, because the infrastructure already exists, and it would have been much cheaper for the taxpayers. But since we did delay quite some time, I tried to figure out, waiting for the mayor's reports, where we're going to pick it, because obviously, the mayor is our executive mayor, and we follow her lead, and we were waiting for the reports to come back. They finally picked a couple of different locations. Long story short, I'm not going to bore, bore anyone with those, with what happened, but the reality is that we weren't picking a site. We were trying to put caveats 10 miles from here. We shouldn't do this. We should do that. We should do that. So at the last special meeting that we had, Anthony, Commissioner Anthony Rodriguez, did say that we were going to have a special meeting for solid waste. And I presented a site. I presented the site where, you know, we know that the Doral site is off the table, because the president, the president's folks have said that it was very hard for them to, for us to get the EPA approvals. You know what that means? In between quotes, they just didn't want it close to Doral. And so we would have to find another site. The other site that really came to mind was the site that there was a land swap deal, a land swap between areas, some lands that we have, where the mosquito control is in Doral. We have some lands there with private sites close to Okeechobee. And that was a proposal that was initiated during the whole debate. And that's the one that I proposed, and that's the one that we're now looking, looking towards, because I thought, you know, we can't continue to kick this can down the road. We can't continue to spend $6 million a month in shipping our waste to other communities. You know, we should be responsible with our own waste and figure out what we do. And one of the most important things, I think, that came out of this is that we do need to collaborate with our partners. Our partners, Broward and Palm Beach, you know, they too are having solid waste problems. You know, there's an incinerator waste-to-energy plant in Palm Beach. Why can we not build one down here? I do believe that the cleanest and best way to proceed is with a waste-to-energy plant that is not the old waste-to-energy plant or the old incinerators. The new technology that exists, that I have seen it, really creates a lot more energy, and it pollutes the environment much less than what people and some of the advocates are saying. So I think the only way to get our way out and get ourselves out of this is have a robust approach from composting, waste-to-energy, recycling, and everything else that comes along with it. We do have to, it just can't be, there's no silver bullet, especially for a community our size.
Oh, Michael, I agree with that. Like, you know, Senator was saying the right thing. It's not one approach. It's a very different phase approach. I know, and when he says partners, our partner is Miami-Dade, right? So they take over our recycle, and we waste a lot of, I mean, we take a lot of waste out of them. Now, what we want to do moving forward, too, is that we have the opportunity, for example, in South Miami, that we have our public workstation, and we're on the rail. So an opportunity that we have is to partner up with our county partners and start bringing waste there, so we can, you know, execute and get a lot of waste. Like you said, the best solution is what he's, I agree with him, by the way. But we do have other opportunities that we can start phasing in that will help this problem, because it's a big problem. And if we don't solve it soon, it's going to, it's going to just keep on, keep on, keep on, getting bigger and bigger, bigger.
The city has a recycling program?
We follow the counties.
So, sir, I was asking the mayor the other day, and she brought up about recycling. And I said to her, "Metamayor, and you're my mayor." I said, "There is no recycling program. If people don't know about it, and people are not endorsing and supporting, it does not exist." And I think I added, "I hope in the next budget, that you'll put money towards marketing, so people will get back in that. The program is just not working." And the county even put into effect, they were sending out recycling cops to look in your garbage, and after, if you had wrong, bad stuff, and they'd give you up to three citations, and they would give you a ticket, $100 ticket. This is a volunteer program. You know what I'd do? Don't do it. The message is really mixed, and that's certainly something that we all can work on, because it used to be really good. I'd recycled everything. I mean, I mean, around the country. So what is it we could do now in the recycling arena, so the people will care a little bit more?
Michael, look, I'll look at it from the Hialeah perspective. The city of Hialeah has their own solid waste program. They privatized it a couple of years ago, which I wasn't necessarily a fan of back then, because we're starting to see similar problems now in the city. But the reality is that recycling is costing more communities more than the benefits are getting out of, for the environment. Why is that? Because we're educating the public. Not everything that's plastic, not everything that's paper, not everything that's cardboard, not everything can be recycled, you know? So what's happening is that people are in the, in the process of trying to help the environment, the process of trying to do their part.
You're adding contamination.
They're adding everything into these recycling bins. So the moment you have a handful of contaminated plastics or contaminated recycled, we think could be recycled, that bin is wasted. So while there is money to be made in recycle, recycling, it's only money to be made when we recycle correctly. And when we recycle correctly, then we get the benefits, not only the financial benefits to the municipality or the county, we get the financial benefits, that it got the environmental benefits to our community. But we, it starts with education. You can have these programs out there. You can find people left and right. But everything starts with education. And we can use our municipal partners across the county to go out into communities and start educating the public. We could have PSAs, commercials, telling people, if we really care about our environment, we want to do more for our environment, we want to do better, let's teach people how to recycle. We have to go back to the basics, and it's teach people how to recycle.
Yeah. The Senator's correct. So we do that in the city. We try to educate as much as we can. The problem that we have is, you know, our partner with Waste Management, is that we can't actually see what part of our actual garbage is recycled. And so we can't have a baseline to understand data. Like, you know, the city right now, we're collectively, and we're doing a lot of really good things, and we like to analyze and have data to make decisions, and we just can't get that. So it's difficult for us as a city to progress, and we're a little small city. We depend a lot on our partners in the county, to do a lot of cool things, and we want to. There's a lot of great ideas that we've discovered and that we're trying to do, but we do need help as well. So it'll be interesting how we move forward with recycling.
We've heard figures between 30% and 70% of what gets put in the blue can never gets recycled, because it's the wrong stuff.
That's a big number, by the way.
Yes.
It's a big number.
Yeah. So hopefully, there's a solution to that. I am proud that my 10-year-old grandson, who lives on the water, was in his kayak with the manatees, and he held up a little plastic bat. "Grandpa, look, I found some trash." And so obviously, what you're saying is that we have to educate, and we got to educate the young people, so that in five and 10 years from now, they get, they get that. And so anyway, so enough that. You have a budget coming up. Would you care to share some of your thoughts?
Well, my thoughts is that we do have, we're facing a tough budget year, a tough budget year created by our own devices, and we have to do a much better job at administering people's money. Look, I haven't voted for all budgets, and a big part of the reason that I did not vote for two of the four budgets that I have voted for is because we were using recurring dollars to cover, non-recurring dollars to cover for recurring, recurring projects. What does that mean? We were getting federal dollars into our budgets. We were using those dollars to plug certain holes. And I don't like when people say, "Well," and some commissioners are saying this, "Well, we have to understand that we have the new constitutional officers." Yeah, but they're not costing us money right now. That's all been part of the budget process. A lot of these constitutional offices are using our back offices right now. They haven't separated 100% from the county, and yet they have to present their budgets to us. All that money was already budgeted before in the past, but now it's going to be budgeted, and they're going to have to administer those dollars. So this is going to be the first time that we do deal with these new constitutional offices and their requests for dollars from us. You know, we have a couple of different perspectives. I see different, different budget requests from the different constitutional offices, and those are the sheriff, the property appraiser, the tax collector, the secretary, the Division of Elections, and clerk of the courts. Clerk of the courts, thanks. And so we are seeing, so we are budgeting for that right now. So it's not just, I think it's a little disingenuous to say, disingenuous to say that that's the problem. No, the problem is that we've been using non-recurring dollars to plug recurring projects. So I think if we would have done things a little bit differently, the shortfall would have been, we would have still had a shortfall, I'm not going to lie. We still would have had a shortfall, but we would have had less of a shortfall than we're facing. It would have been something more manageable than this big number that you see.
That would be nice to hear publicly, from all the powers that be.
That was public.
Yes, I understand. You know, prior to, it's like, okay, we get it. We all, you know, sometimes we blink, we miss it, we make mistakes, because there are people that are frustrated, where it's like, how could this happen? All right? And it is a big deal to the people that need that money, and we do a lot of work with a lot of charities, and I hear it every day, all right? And so hopefully, the charities are going to be able to figure out private sources that are going to be able to fill those, or maybe in the 2027 budget, there might be a little bit more money, you know?
Yeah, Michael, look, and I'll tell you, look, there's some non-for-profits and charities that serve a county purpose. I think we need to start evaluating all these non-for-profits and charities that are doing work, and are they serving a county purpose? Those are the first things that I would see. And then, one of the other things is we have to put benchmarks, figure out how those dollars are being used. What is the rate of return that we're getting from these organizations? What services are they providing that we no longer have to provide, that we can save on? And I think we have lost, I don't think we've had a good accountability, accounting of how some of these dollars have been being used, but nonetheless, there is a great number of organizations here that do good work for the people in Miami-Dade County, and we need to start rewarding those that do the right thing. That's one. The other thing is, when we look at our budgets, and we see what is happening with parks, recreation, cultural affairs facilities, for God's sakes, a lot of people have been moving down to Miami-Dade County because we do have a robust park system, because we do have cultural affairs. We have new venues, you know, in the cultural affairs and theater and in orchestra. We have, it's amazing what we have here. And for now to slash those from the get-go, I think it's a little, I understand the politics that's being played, but I am committed 100% to ensure that we try to restore as much of those dollars to these facilities and to these organizations that do provide a quality of life for our residents. And if we start eliminating these programs, you know, a lot of these programs help the next generation, the children stay out of trouble. They find the love in the arts. They love, find the love in sports or theater, music, and that keeps them out of trouble. And then think about what we save in the criminal justice system, in policing, and in our jail system. Sometimes those numbers, we forget to quantify those numbers when we start cutting on this side. And it really just adds more to the problem to this community. And we've come a long way, we've come a long, and this is coming from a Republican, mind you, we've come a long way to make sure that we have a community that serves all, a community that really encompasses the richness of the diversity of our people. And we have to continue that. And what better place than we do that through the cultural affairs program that we have in Miami-Dade County?
I'm glad you brought up about policing. Let's talk about the South Miami Police Department. One of the things that we love about being here is I pick up the phone, I call the police. I'm done for 45 seconds sometimes. It's really tremendous, the police force here in South Miami. You seem to be happier than in the years past.
Well, I mean, we're proud of our police force. I think that's something like, what we were talking about, it's quality of life, right? So when we want to make investments or strategies in our budget, first is quality of life. So what's quality of life, safety? So police gets a lot of our funding, a lot of our attention, because that's really important to our constituents, right? Parks, events, public works, right? So we got to make sure that garbage is picked up, those bare necessities, we want to be best in class. So we make those investments to make sure those main focuses and the pillars of our city are moving forward. Now, if we have extra funds that we want to do, we will create parties, we'll create the ability to bring people together, the community, the elderly communities have events for them. We're doing a lot of really good things, but those four pillars, including and starting with our police is really important to us.
And Senator, we know that police are under special stress because every second or third car has got a gun in it, right? And that police are liked, all right, a lot when you want them. And when you don't want them, all right, that they're going to give you a ticket or, or more. So the stress on them is particularly high as compared to the firemen who are loved all the time. So what, what can the county do to keep the police officers and first responders with their heads being in the right place?
Look, first of all, I just want to clarify something when it comes to first responders and when it comes to firefighters. Our firefighters may not have their lives on the line every day, like some may say it's a little bit different than our police officers. However, they do see a lot of the tragedy in our community. Our firefighters are faced with the car accidents and the murders and they see a lot of. They see tragedy on a day-to-day basis. And that in itself puts an incredible amount of stress on their person, on their well-being and on their mental health. Just like our police officers, you know, but in, with the police officer is always a little different because it's inherent. That they walk out every day and they have a gun and they could be called into. Any type of violent situation that their lives are always going to be on the line at that moment. And again, I don't want to demean the firefighters and what they do, because it's, I guess it's the same moment.
I don't think you are.
It's just a little different, I just. Okay, now I, now I hope I don't offend anyone because I'm a big defender of our public, of our first responders through and through.
Big fan.
So, so for us, I think when we look at our police officers and our first responders and I saw the amazing work that they did through. During the Champlain Tower collapse and then subsequent to that, all the work that they do in our community. We need to make sure, the reason that we have the community that we have in big part is because we have an amazing police force. We have an amazing police force that understands the community, who is integrated into the community. And we need to make sure that we keep them at the funding levels that they are at least currently.
And we, we wish the new, the new sheriff lots of good luck and she's tough, right? I remember one time she says, you, you do the crime, you're going to go to jail. She said it like, okay, yes ma'am. So let's talk a little bit about autism, the reports that we see, we've been actively involved in, in having these conversations for the last year. It's, it's essentially one out of thirty to thirty-five kids have autism. But one out of seven has some other disorder in there and we see it all the time, we now have two autism shows. And we are dealing with the parents every, on a daily basis when they come in, including a young lady. She, she had two seventeen-month-old twins. The kids were perfect, big job, big house, big husband, everything. In two weeks, the kids became non-communicative, stopped talking. The husband left, wife lost her job and her total job now is to help those kids transition. So my question to the Senator and to all, all of us taxpayers, what can we do to provide assistance for the families? Not just for the kids, but for the families because the stress that is on them. And we're going to ask the Commissioner next.
Look, I. I lived it with my godson, I see the stress that it puts on a family. And. It's a difficult one. I think the first and foremost is trying to figure out the cause, what's causing this? There was a study that was done not too long ago, they were looking at the Amish community. And the, the levels of autism and behavioral health issues was significantly less, almost not existing in these communities. Same thing with some of our indigenous communities across the country. And I think a big part of that is the food and nutrition that we put in our bodies. So I think that there is something that we need to start doing and listen, I'm not a scientist, nor do I pretend to be one. But I've been in healthcare for, for many years. And I know there could be a combination between some of these vaccines or the food, there's something happening and all the processed foods that we're ingesting. And some of these things that we're putting into our, our, our children's bodies. That we need to do much better as a society, as a nation, for the health and well-being of our children. Because again, the stressors then come on the families, families have been broken up. Because unfortunately, it is a lot of pressure that's being put on them. So when it comes to autism and when it comes to behavioral, some of the behavioral challenges. I think the community needs to do a lot more inclusive programming, that's also, I'll tell, because I've done a great job. Commissioner Regalado, we respectful of her, she's done an incredible job at, at trying to make sure that some of our parks. Are, are inclusive, make sure that a lot of legislation that gets done, takes into account. That we have communities that need help. And that is what government, government should be spending their money in those areas, you know, I've always said government should be the voice for the voiceless. What more voice has population that those account help themselves? And you can judge a community, how they take care of the young and they're old and they're disabled. And that's what we should be doing as a community, doing a lot better job. And again, we have our municipal partners, I don't think that the county and our municipalities should be adversely fighting against each other. We should work in collaboration, figuring out how we can use our resources to better our communities. And at the end of the day, local governments, I know that Dade County is considered a local government, but our municipalities, it's where it's at. And the county should be using our municipality as a resource and not competing against them.
And he's right, luckily I have Commissioner Regalado in my district, so we set up because of her lead and, you know, we, we wanted to understand how our, our city. Was doing with unique abilities, disabilities or, you know, et cetera, all, all under the whole gamut. And we, we saw that we had a deficiency there. So we set up a unique abilities board, one of your people here that work here is going to be on that board, help us through that. We have area stage, we have a lot, my wife, the pediatrician, and she want me to back up vaccines, so my pediatrician will kill me if I don't say anything about vaccines, but.
Vaccines are a port. There's just a combination of all these things that we're ingesting.
No, no, I agree with you, by the way. But those all, all that thing that comes together, we need to do better job as a municipality to make sure that we integrate. And we have better resources, better systems, our police, for example, have put a new system in place. Where we identify autistic kids or autistic families, if there's any issues that we don't understand what's going on, it's clearly identified. And we have a special system that assists that, so we'll continue to get better at it, I think we're playing catch-up here as a city. We have resources that we're, we're playing, we're playing together, not against each other, so we'll, we'll see a lot of good strides here in the next future here.
Commissioner Regalado was here a few months ago, maybe it was a year ago at this point, she said they deserve a seat at the table. So Green and I made a commitment to help that happen, that's why I bring it up continually. So South Miami is lucky to have Dr. Tina Carol Scott run the South Miami Children's Center where she is a pediatrician. And where she's been for her over seventeen years, gave up a lucrative practice Bay Harbor, Bowel Harbor, to come over and help the people that needed it the most. Your wife's a pediatrician, no?
Yeah, they do the same thing, federally qualified.
And, and so when I was talking about the kids' patients, she's, no, Michael, it's a family. It's just not one person, it's a whole family, she refers to those families. And she made me look to this bigger picture, so when there's a problem here, everybody's affected by it, not just the, the, the immediate family. But the cousins and the grandparents, et cetera. So that's, and we, we try to, to help her out over there whenever we can. And I urge people if they have beautiful clothing to be able to donate that there. For a long time we were doing that, she used to text me, is that stuff from you? And I go, no. Finally, she says, Michael, I know what size you wear, that is, those are your shirts, I recognize that. So if people have clothes, all right, South Miami Children's Center, if you want to drop it off here, you can at the office and we'll take it over there.
Well, she has, she has a drive going on right now for clothing and food, so.
My closet's going to get empty.
Where is this?
This is here at our community center. Yeah, where Dr. Scott is. But we, we, she's always looking for things and she has a drive going on as we speak.
And she was named a Saltwater Fellow by the Miami Foundation. And that means that she applied for last year and got two grants of fifty thousand dollars each for a total of a hundred thousand to help her. And that came after some of the bigger sponsors said, we're not going to give you anymore, you got to go get some grants. And so she was able to do that and to her credit. And so all those charities that are out there that said, gee, we didn't get a hundred thousand dollars from the county this year. Figure out another way to do it, because I know that there are some answers for the, for the, for these people. So anyway, South Miami is really rocking and rolling, lots of neat stuff, people are going to benefit from that. I know that there's another building that Related is putting up, thank you Miami-Dade County for doing that. There's going to be more apartments here, is there's going to be a school in it, you know?
Fifty-fifty, we're, we're still working through that.
All right, so whatever it's going to be, it's going to be wonderful and finally, after forty years, the neighborhood is good. My thanks, all right, to, to the city and it was no growth for a long time. And there's the lifespan of all those buildings and so it's come to fruition that it's very, very pleasant. So thank you for that.
Appreciate it.
And thank you for many years of service to the state and to the country and to Miami-Dade County. And I'm glad you didn't take that job over there entirely, all right?
Yeah, but South Miami's come a long way, seriously, South Miami's come a long way, you guys have done phenomenal work and the mayor is doing great jobs there, so I congratulate all of you. You do have a good team and it really could be an example for several municipalities across the, the county to look at what happens when you really put your ego aside. And try to work together as a team regardless of party affiliation.
Okay, just for clarity, the budget has to be passed by no later than what date?
September, October, yeah, because we have, our budget hearings are now in September, I don't have the actual dates, I wish we would have the actual date. But now in September, our budget hearings will happen, it'll happen in September, I think.
I hope you speak your piece, all right? And I hope that you can put things in that you want and y'all can come to something.
He's got to touch on that.
Well, one of the things that we need to speak out, some other point is talk about the FIFA money.
Oh, let's talk about the FIFA money, how much money is it really?
You know, but look, one of the things that they've been talking about, I think there's a little bit of misconception, I, they came to the county commission twice. They came one time asking for twenty million dollars, they were giving ten point five, I voted against that. Then there was another time that they asked for another ten million dollars, you know how they did this, they did it through the mid-budget, mid-budget, mid-budget review process. There was a whole bunch of other things that were put into that, I still voted against it. Why do I vote against it? There has been nowhere that I can find the Miami-Dade County made a commitment for twenty million dollars. Or do we make a commitment for even in-kind services for police and fire? I'm not saying I'm against the in-kind services because if you attract these world premier, global events. Think the community should have a little bit of skin in the game. But in a moment right now where we are facing these budget shortfalls, I think we should be reconsidering our position on some of these monies that have been going out. And mind you, I had our county attorney's office scouring through all the papers. You know, the sports commission may have had their commitments with FIFA. But Miami-Dade County doesn't have one ounce of commitment for any cash deal. So I think the sports commission needs to raise some dollars, I believe they should raise some dollars. But I think they should really be raising the private sector with a lot of the philanthropy that goes on in our community and all these beautiful buildings that are here and developers that are here. Instead of going to taxpayers or Miami-Dade County, asking them for this twenty million dollars.
So what are you going to do?
Yeah, I'm hoping that we can figure out a way to get this back. I'm hoping a way that we can talk to our county commissioners and understand that in these years of, in this year of a tight budget. That we should be considering how we spend all these dollars.
What if you, some of your colleagues would say, we applied for that, not once, but twice, that we, we wanted to give them the money. So when they say that to you, if they do, what do you, how?
We never applied for it. I, I, I want people to tell me where it is and what contract it is that it shows up, that we said that we were committed to twenty million dollars. Not only twenty million dollars, a twenty million dollars in cash and there's about twenty-five million dollars in in-kind services from police and fire. So that's a forty million dollar commitment that's coming out of taxpayers.
Is that received as overtime or just regular time, how do you say in-kind donation?
The in-kind, just in kind for police and fire.
Okay.
So most of this will be in overtime services because it's, you know, I'm, I'm misspeaking here.
It's costing.
It's costing us and police and fire, where we're donating to them and these services.
So, well, what I'm, you know, listen, great for the sports and all that, but you know what? My head is in a different place, the, the money, I think, should be used to take care of these people that really need it.
I agree.
That really, really need it and, and people are really hurting now and the next couple of months doesn't look good. Because you have federal cuts and then you have the local cuts and eventually those people. The county and the state is going to have to take care of those people. Because when they get unemployed or when the rent gets too high or when they lose their jobs or everything costs so much and not can be able to pay the rent. And then there's, they're going to be back on the streets, so I hope you do the right thing.
And I said, we could do a much better job, us in government, we can always do a better job at how we spend people's, people's dollars. And I, I find it a little disheartening sometimes, a lot of times when we see that we just spend money left and right. And we forget that this is, and I look at my parents, father's ninety-three years old, my mother's eighty-four. God bless them, they can still manage for themselves, but every time we misspend a dollar, that means it gets harder on them. And now that the economy, we don't know what's going to happen in the future right now. And what I mean, the economy as it relates to Miami-Dade County government, what's happening, we see there was a, I don't think it is a, a, a revenue problem. We don't have a revenue problem in Miami-Dade County, we have a spending problem and we need to get a, a house in order.
Well, it's going to come soon, we'll know within a month.
Starting with that, housing, housing in general is a big issue, not for our city, not for everybody in Miami-Dade County and pretty much anybody in southeast Florida. So those are, I, I agree with you, I think that's something we definitely need to look at, we're continuing to get better and better, but it's still a big problem. And we need, we need the help there.
Okay, we can wrap up, South Miami Commissioner Steve Kaye, Senator Bernega, so thank you so much. And we can look right over the camera, folks, thank you for joining the number one source of hyperlocal news in South Florida, have a great day, thanks for joining us, bye now.